Okay, it's, uh, call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council. It's Monday, March 25th, 2024. It's 5:33 in the evening. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Santiness.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Morse.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Coops.
Here.
No, we need nobody to excuse for absence, so we're gonna move right into closed session. Ryan, what do you have for us?
Uh, we have three items we'll go into closed session for. That's 3A, 3B, and 3C. Conference through a property negotiator, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, and conference with legal counsel initiation of litigation.
That's it.
I have a conflict for 3A.
All right, let the record show that Wendy Morris is out on 3A. Anybody else have a recusal or conflict? No public comments? So recess to closed session. And Wendy, we're gonna do, we'll figure out when to do her first or last, so. We're gonna call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council. And it's Monday, it's March 25th, 2024, and it's a little after 7 o'clock in the evening. And, uh, there were, we just had closed session and there were no reportable actions. So Madam City Clerk, please do the roll call.
Councilmember Santiness.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Morse.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor Coops.
Here.
This evening, we're gonna have an invocation offered by Councilmember Sunny Santiness, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by PJ up Milana, Director of Parks and Recreation. So please stand with me.
Let's bow our head in prayer. Heavenly Father, we recognize your greatness and your presence among us tonight. We thank you for the gift of life, the gift of family, and the gift of community, especially the seat of Bellflower. Uh, we thank you for giving us wonderful residents and dedicated staff. As we gather tonight, please remember our staff so that they can continue to work diligently to better the lives of our residents. We also thank our first responders, members of the military, for keeping us safe. And as we gather tonight, we ask God to keep them safe so that they can continue to keep us safe. As we gather tonight, please remember those who are sick, those who are unemployed, those who are homeless, uh, those who don't have food on their table. Please give them the comfort that they need. As we gather tonight also, uh, please guide us to tackle the, uh, the issues before us. Please give us the wisdom and guide us, enlighten us, so that we can make the best decision for the betterment of our city. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please place your right hand over your heart and join with me. I pledge allegiance to the Father, and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Now we'll have our council announcements, and I'll begin. Uh, the city will honor Bellflower's first responders and public safety personnel for extraordinary acts of heroism and outstanding service at the city's Bravo Award Ceremony and Luncheon that'll be held Thursday, April 25th, 2024. The event will be held at the main event center, and that's located at 16,400 Bellflower Boulevard. The doors will open at 10:30 in the morning, and the event will begin at 11:00. Lunch is provided by the venue's exclusive caterer, TGIS. Limited ticks are, tickets are on sale and can be purchased through the city's website, and that can be found at www.bellflower.org. Mr. Mayor Protem Ray Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Bellflower is inviting entrepreneurs and small business owners to participate in the Small Business Kiosk Program. We have an existing opportunity available to lease kiosk number B, and that is at the corner of Belmont and Bellflower Boulevard, located in downtown Bellflower. Uh, this program provides a platform to operate small storefront and to contribute to the growth of the pedestrian activity around town. Apply now to be considered for this community program. For an application, visit our website at www.bellflower.org, or stop by City Hall to the second floor and pick up a copy of the application, which is due Friday, April 19th. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Councilmember Sunny Santiness.
Thank you, Mayor. The Bellflower Farmers Market operates from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM every Monday, like today, except for certain holidays at the Town Center Plaza. There's a wide selection of fresh produce, bread, food vendors, and handcrafted items. Keep an eye out for the Bellflower Economic Development Team at upcoming Farmers Market. They'll be distributing free downtown T-shirts. You can't beat that. Stay tuned for the city's social media channels for announcements on when the Economic Development Team will be giving away these stylish shirts. For questions about the market, please call 562-804-1424, extension 2013. Or to participate as a vendor in the market, please visit farmandcraftmarket, one word, dot com, forward slash bellflower. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Member, Councilmember Sunny Santiness. Councilmember Wendy Morris.
Hi, everyone. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce invites businesses, service clubs, and the community to its next monthly morning mingle, scheduled for tomorrow morning, Tuesday, March 26th, from 9:00, 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM. The Chamber is also hosting an Easter Extravaganza, event which offers a chance to win a $500 Disneyland gift card and other prizes. For more information, please call the Bellflower Chamber of Commerce at 562-867-1744. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Bellflower. The Fair Housing Foundation is hosting its 2024 Youth Poster Contest, which offers a chance to win the first-place prize at $175. The contest is open to students in the 4th through 8th grade. Students must create a poster on any size paper with this year's theme, "Fair Housing: A Place to Call Home." The poster submission must be in JPG, PNG, or PDF format, and must be submitted to the email address cprado@fhfc.org. By April 16th, for more information, please visit www.fhfc.org. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. So at this time, uh, we're gonna do some presentations, so I would invite my council colleagues to meet over here on the riser, and, uh, we'll go from there. All right. For the first presentation, I'd like to invite the Bellflower Women's Club, along with Ms. Bellflower Court, for the presentation here for declare March 2024 as Women's History Month. So if you're a member of that group, please come forward, and you're gonna be...
See you again.
Hey, Sally.
It was a special day, huh?
Thanks for being here.
Yeah, I did get to see you. Thank you. Nice to see you.
I'm gonna sit, I'm gonna stand by the big tall man.
That's fine. Good to see you.
Hi, baby.
Now, let's not forget the president. We gotta have room for the president here.
[inaudible]
Oh, yeah, there you go. All right, so we have a presentation here, and, uh, but that's your affair. Now, this, uh, Women's History Month, whereas March is National History Month, National Women's History Alliance has designated the theme for Women's History Month 2024, women who advocate for equality, diversity, and inclusion. So therefore, in 2024, we honor the women who tirelessly worked in dismantling barriers, challenging prejudices, erased opportu, create opportunities for all individuals regardless of their background and attacks against Diversity, Equity, and Inclusions Program and training in our communities. Therefore, I, Dan Coops, Mayor of the City of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as National Women's History Month, and that is signed by myself, Mayor Dan Coops, Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, Councilmember Wendy Morris, Councilmember Victor Sanchez, and of course, when, Councilmember Sunny Santiness. So that is for you ladies to commemorate this month as Women's History Month. Time for a picture. All right. All right. We would like to recognize Senator Barbara Archuleta's 2024 Woman of the Year winner. We have with us tonight Eden Escobardo, and who has recently been awarded the 2024 Woman Achievement Award by Senator Bob Archuleta of the 30th Senate District. Eden is the president of Ms. Bellflower and has been instrumental in making a positive impact in the lives of young women in our community. Thank you, Eden, for your wonderful service to Bellflower. So here's your presentation. All right, congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
You deserve it. We also have with us tonight Barbara Beard, President of California Federation of Women's Clubs. Last year was the winner of the Women Achievement Award. Thank you, Barbara, for all you do in our community. Is Barbara present? All right, come on up here. This is last year's recipient, so you got your award, but we wanna have your picture taken with you.
Surprise, surprise.
All right, next is Valley Christian Team 1711 Recognition. Uh, I'd like to invite Valley Christian Team 1711 to the presentation riser, and, uh, so if you're here, come forward, and your sponsors. You've got uniforms carried, you know? Yeah. Thanks for coming. Congratulations.
Which was Grace?
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for being here.
Hi, thank you, no, thanks for being here.
Joseph? Jason?
All right.
Did you guys all get us?
Yeah.
So let me, uh, before we do the picture, and turn around.
Look at all your pictures.
All the cameras.
Yeah, that's a big deal. You're gonna be on television. Just turn on, uh...
Yep, question. Tell people that one.
There you go.
There we go.
There we go.
There we go.
There you go.
There you go.
We'd like to congratulate Team 1711, the Vincent Van Gogh Bots, on your qualification for the first LEGO League Open European Championship to be held in Norway from May 13th through 17th. Now, this is a worldwide honor. These kids are representing our area, our Bellflower, Valley Christian, in Norway. The team will compete with 49 teams from 49 other countries in a multifaceted robotics competition. Team 1711 is comprised of six students from Valley Christian Schools. Tonight, we'd like to recognize each one of these students in Team 1711 with a certificate of achievement for this terrific opportunity that they've worked so hard for. So I'm gonna list their names here, because they've got their certificates, and, uh, kinda raise your hand, let you know who you are. Grace Biama, 7th grade, there she is. Seth Karazaza, 7th grade. Karaza. And Sonia Jasper. All right, go for it.
She's over here. Over there.
All right.
And, uh, Lily Kang, 8th grade, there you go. And, uh, Joseph Noor, 7th grade. And couldn't be, out of town is Jason Perona, but he's in 7th grade, and he couldn't be with us. And then, of course, we wanna honor the sponsors and the coaches. It's Garrett Biama here on my left, and standing next to him is Simona Noor, the coach. And so with your support and guidance, and the opportunity we'd like to have to make this possible, congratulations to all of you. It's a big deal to be here, and it's a big deal to represent our community in Norway, and we wanna thank you for that. And, uh, you really excelled, and I hope you come in first, but even if you don't, just to get to Norway is a... You know, I call it a big deal if I get to Catalina. You're going to Norway. So, everybody got their pictures? One more?
One more, one more. Okay.
And they've sound this, uh, out for me. This is our third presentation. Like to invite Bellflower resident Olga Stavro to the presentation riser to receive a proclamation in honor of A U A Maladessa Award. You mean, tell me what you, yeah.
Amaloidosis.
Yeah.
Amaloidosis.
No, I, I know, it's... Do you have anybody else wanna come up? Yeah, please come forward.
Oh, okay.
How you doing?
Good to see you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
First.
Come over here.
Stand on this side, too.
Yeah, sit on that side.
Two reds.
Put this together.
Come on up here.
Yeah, you guys are good.
You know, the 7th graders did easier than you guys. So... name of the, what we're causing the awareness, but you're gonna have to announce it.
Okay. Amaloidosis.
There it is. And, uh, you, I'll give the mic to you when, after the presentation, you can tell us what that is. March is Amaloidosis Awareness Month, a month dedicated to raising awareness and supporting those living with the disease and their loved ones. And early diagnosis can lead to better outcomes for both patients and their families. The Awareness Month is an opportunity to educate the public about the signs and symptoms, and to educate and to support patients with the disease, give their caregivers and the medical community support. Therefore, I, Dan Coops, Mayor of the City of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as Amaloidosis Awareness Month in the City of Bellflower, signed by Mayor Dan Coops, Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, Councilmember Wendy Morris, Councilmember Victor Sanchez, and Councilmember Sunny Santiness. So, here's your presentation, and you've got pictures, and you're gonna give a chance to talk about what this disease is. And, uh, we're on video, and we got camera. So, Ms. Beard?
Yeah, sure. So, amaloidosis is a very rare disease. There are different mutations. Um, I have the hereditary type, so I got this from my mom. My mom passed away from it. My twin brother Marco, right here, um, battled the disease for about 12 years. Um, and because of him, I was able to get tested and receive treatment, because I too have it. Um, but I caught mine early enough, so hopefully the treatments will slow down the progression. There is no cure yet for amaloidosis, and there are so many different variations, and it takes about three to four, three to four years for people to actually get diagnosed for it. There's roughly only about 3,000 people with the hereditary form that I have, so it makes me kinda special, I guess. Um, and I think it's about 10,000, 30,000 worldwide. The numbers keep changing because more and more doctors and people are becoming aware. So, um, the reason I wanted to do this is because Amaloidosis Foundation has declared this month as awareness, and there are different cities all over the nation are lighting up for amaloidosis, and the color is red or burgundy. And so I was really thrilled that you guys took the time to consider this. So that's, that's basically it. So thank you for being here, and thank you again for recognizing this. Um, it's really important.
Thank you very much. [applause] I know many of you are here for the presentations, and you really don't have much interest in all this boring city work, because we'll be here till midnight with it, but nevertheless, if you'd like to leave, you can leave. If you'd like to stay, God bless you, but, uh... Yes? Yes, Olga?
I forgot one thing. About it, I'm just gonna...
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Garrett. Hey. Hey, Bob.
Good evening, Dan.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Yeah, I had to.
I know. I got you out of here early, though. We did it.
Right, yes.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Maybe they can raise a little money from this. How's that sound?
Sure. We're about a quarter of the way there.
All right, what's...
Right now, we're landing in, uh, West Virginia.
Well, so you...
So we're always a little bit further.
Well, we'll get you a canoe. How's that?
Thank you.
So, uh, Team 1711 is trying to raise money because it's a big expense, and, uh, they've got six 12- to 14-year-old kids going. They've raised about a quarter of the money, and, uh, if you would like to know information about this, you can follow them on Instagram at VCSFlikeFrankLL. That's VCSFLL on Instagram, and they would certainly love to be, uh, they'd like to receive the money as a donation, so, thank you. So, uh, the rest of you like the city business, so I appreciate that. So, Sally, this is old hat for you, isn't it?
I'm seeing that you guys have improved.
Well, Sally has been married to a former mayor, Bill Pendleton, in another time and place, and, uh, so we're...
Five ago.
But, no, we are honoring you tonight, not Bill, so, but I'm glad you're here. So with that, we're gonna move on to, uh, Mr. Smoot, and you wanna read the appropriate things for open, uh, mic?
Open mic. Certainly, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we reach that, or as we review that particular item. Uh, you'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
So, Mr. De La Torre, so nice to have you here. Been a while.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you all. I'm Hector De La Torre. I'm the, uh, Director of the Gateway Cities Council of Governments. Um, in a past life, I was an Assembly Member representing the City of Bellflower.
No, you did a great job for us.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I'm, I'm still very proud of the park right over here, uh, that we, we were able to do together. Um, just, uh, wanted to, uh, let you know that I'm now the Executive Director of the COG. I've been there a few months. Um, and, uh, also to the general public who doesn't know, uh, the COG is a joint powers authority, uh, of 27 cities and 11 unincorporated areas, including Bellflower, that serve, that, that combine their efforts on issues that spill over city lines. Transportation, housing and homelessness, environment, economic development, and now health and wellness, although we haven't started doing much in the health and wellness space, it is an issue we are gonna do. So, um, we want to collaborate with all of our cities on these issues. We want to bring, uh, resources to our communities. Our mission is very simple, to improve the quality of life of our residents. And so I'm, I'm very honored to be the Executive Director of this organization that I was a member of as a city council member from South Gate way back when, uh, and we can do really, really great things together. I do wanna point out that on our SoCal REN program, which is one of our environmental programs, Bellflower is the only city that hasn't joined, uh, so I'm gonna put in a plug for you to join that. It is, um, a joint, uh, effort, doesn't cost any money to the city, where we bring resources, uh, environmental resources, uh, energy efficiency, et cetera, for city facilities and equipment. Um, so would love to have you guys join that. Um, we are working very closely on, um, housing and homelessness. Um, I've mentioned, uh, to the city manager, um, that we're doing a pilot project up in Montebello, where they have transitional housing, and, um, we're partnering with LA Care to provide services to the people who are there, and you guys are next. After we test it out up there, um, we're gonna bring it down here to your facility. Um, we wanna make sure that the folks who are there in transitional housing are getting the things that they need so that they can move out into permanent housing, whether that's permanent supportive housing or just permanent housing. Um, so that is a priority for us as we go forward. Um, transportation, there's always something going on on transportation around here. Um, certainly, the southeast gateway line is, is an important thing for our region. Economic development, on, uh, April 12th, um, there is gonna be a workforce development conference at Ceritos College, um, that, uh, your city manager has information about for council members to attend. Um, it is, uh, we are gonna have Senator LaFonza Butler as the keynote. I don't think we've ever had a US senator come to one of our events, so we're very excited about that. Um, so that's just a little rundown. You know where to find me. I'm just over in Paramount, on Paramount Boulevard. I still live in South Gate. I'm still a resident of the Gateway Cities, and, and it's just an honor to, to be back home representing all of you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming by.
Thank you, Hector.
Anybody else have anything they wanna talk about with the city council?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Ernie Ramirez. I'm the Vice President of the Los Angeles County Fire Museum, and I'm not sure if you aware, but this year, Los Angeles County Fire Department is celebrating their 100-year anniversary.
What we are looking at is Saturday, May 11, having the event from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We are going to open it to the public, and it will be free for everybody. The museum will be free, and all the displays and exhibits will be free. The fire department will bring in all their latest and greatest equipment and their firefighters, which is the finest fire department in the world. I had the honor and privilege of wearing that same badge for 37 years, so it's very near and dear to me. We are planning with this partnership that we would like to request closing down Bellflower Boulevard between Oak and Main. We will keep the traffic flowing between Oak and Main, so it'll be that one little area closed. We will take care of all the permits and any costs as far as the company coming in and doing that, taking care of that. And let me make sure, see what else I have for you guys. You had asked us to, when you decided to embrace the fire museum, you wanted us to bring people in, and we brought people in from all over the world, and we continue to do this. So, we see this as another example of being able to do that. So, we're hoping that you will indulge us on that and allow us to bring more people into the community and do that. I have with me Acting Assistant Chief Jessica Post, and also, LaFonda Riggins is our community service liaison.
You know LaFonda. Yes. Everybody knows LaFonda.
So, we will all be working together and bringing this event together, and we hope that you will allow us to do this, so we can continue to do that. And we want to show the public the finest fire department in the world and also your fire museum. We're here, and we just want to share it with everybody, so...
And I think you've already made some outreach to our city staff about what you're doing.
Correct.
Mr. Smoot, we have... We've approved what they want to do. We're just working out the details?
Yeah, Lynn's working with them on to work out some of the details about the closures and things, but we'll get it worked out.
Right, but we have time, and we're in. We wanted you here at that fire museum. We're certainly going to support what you do, and it's one of the jewels of our city. And I appreciate your conscientiousness on holding this 100-year anniversary, and you have the support of the department to go with it. And so, it's really a cool event and a cool thing to have in Bellflower.
Great. Looking forward to seeing all of you. Thank you. We appreciate that very much.
No, thank you for doing it. It's because it'll give you not only the county recognition, but it throughout the nation. I think people will recognize what you're doing.
Absolutely, and we're going to do a big media blast, so we're going to let everybody know to come to City of Bellflower.
Great.
On a regular day.
Well, thanks for coming forward and reminding us, but you stay in touch with Mr. Gurecki here, and that's this gentleman here.
Yes, sir.
And he'll make sure that we get things put together in a way that's beneficial for both of us.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Good deal. Everybody's happy tonight.
Wow.
Got to remember this night.
Yeah.
Though, I don't see anybody else going to give testimony. We're going to move on with the rest of the meeting. And again, I'm going to declare a recess if anybody wants to leave. If you want to go, fine. If you'd like to stay... That was as good as it gets.
Thank you.
No, that's okay. We're tough. Thanks for being here.
We got a lot of boring stuff.
Yeah, congratulations, Eden. Mr. Smoot?
This is consideration of possible action to adopt a Resolution 2415, a resolution finding and determining that the public interest, convenience, and necessity require the acquisition of certain real property located at 8833 Cedar Street for public purposes. And I think Travis and our Attorney's Office have this one.
Thank you, Mr. Smoot. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. The item before you tonight is to consider the adoption of a resolution of necessity for the acquisition of 8833 Cedar Street in the city of Bellflower. The subject site is located on the north side of Cedar Street, just west of Lakewood Boulevard. The property is approximately 24,000 square feet in area and is owned by 20434 Santa Fe Avenue LLC. The city currently leases the site for the operation of the Bellflower New Hope Homeless Shelter. As brief background, the city entered into a settlement agreement in 2019 with Orange County Catholic Worker et al. to complete a plan for the location and construction of a temporary shelter in the city. And then, in October of 2019, the city entered into a lease agreement with the property owner for the construction and operation of a temporary shelter. And then, in May of 2020, the New Hope Shelter was opened for Bellflower-based homeless individuals. On November 30, 2023, the city presented a fair market offer to acquire the property, and this was submitted to the property ownership group in the amount of $1.95 million. And this offer was based on an appraisal by Cushman Anne Wakefield, an independent appraiser, with the date of value of November 1, 2023. So, at this time, the owner has not... The owner received the city's offer to date, and the owner has not accepted nor rejected it. As a result, it is now recommended that an action in eminent domain be started to acquire the property. However, before the filing of this action, the city must hold a duly noticed hearing on the proposed resolution and provide the owner of the property an opportunity to be heard, provided that the owner has submitted a timely request to be heard in writing prior to the hearing. The property owner, in this case, did not file the request in writing within the prescribed timeframe. After the hearing, if the council finds that the public interest, convenience, and necessity requires the city's acquisition of the property, the City Council should adopt the attached resolution authorizing proceedings to acquire the property. So, the resolution contains specific findings. These include, one, the city is obligated to operate, improve, and otherwise maintain the New Hope Shelter for persons who are unhoused, which the city is currently operating at 8833 Cedar Street pursuant to a lease agreement between the city and the property owner. Two, the public interest, convenience, and necessity require the city's acquisition of the property. Three, the project is planned or located in the manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. And then, next, the taking of the real property is necessary for the project. And then, next, the taking of the property is authorized by Article 1, Section 19 of the California Constitution and other applicable law. I would like to mention there is a minor typo on Section 2E of the proposed resolution. The correct government code section reference on that second line of Section 2E should actually be Section 37350.5. There was zero missing on the resolution, so just wanted to make note of that. If the resolution of necessity is adopted, then staff will fix and reference that correct statute. So, the next finding is the offer to purchase has been made to the owners of the property. And the next finding is notice of public hearing before the City Council was duly given in the time, form, and manner as required by law. And lastly, the city has complied with all conditions and statutory requirements necessary to exercise the power of eminent domain to acquire the property. So, please note that questions relating to value are not yet relevant at this time, but the proposed action today is only to commence the eminent domain process. Additionally, the adoption of the resolution of necessity does not preclude the city from continuing negotiations with the property owner for the voluntary acquisition of the property. So, at this time, staff recommends the City Council open the public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence, adopt Resolution Number 24-15, and this is with the recommended amendment to Section 2E. And this would be adopting it by a minimum of two-thirds vote, or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. So, that concludes the staff report. Staff is available to answer any questions, and we also have Mr. Alan Socio on Zoom here, and he is an eminent domain attorney with the City Attorney's Office, and he's available to answer any questions related to the eminent domain process or the timing of this. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Travis. Any questions? We'll start with you, Sunny. Would you have any questions? Because you always bring out the best in people.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarification, there's very succinct presentation. You mentioned that the owner has not accepted nor rejected the offer.
Correct. We've received...
So, have we heard from the owner?
We have not.
Okay. And that brings me to the next question. Just for clarification, how sure are we that we have the right owner that took contact on this eminent domain process?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're very positive that we have the correct owner.
Okay, very good. So, they received the notices from the city clerk, and so we're good in terms of the ownership question. All right, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Sanchez, any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, it sounds like... And correct me if I'm wrong, I've never been in the process of... In the process of an eminent domain process. I believe there's two versions, a friendly style usually where there's communication from the other party, and a form of negotiation. And in this case, it looks like we're going to go a different route, which is the more...
Aggressive.
Aggressive, less friendly. I don't know if that's a technical term, but just kind of educate me a little bit here.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, wanted I introduce Mr. Alan Socio, who's my partner, and he can go through the various iterations of eminent domain. As a preliminary matter, of course, we always hope that we'll be able to reach a negotiated settlement with regard to acquiring property. In some cases, that's not possible. But, Alan?
And to that point, before, Alan, you make your comments, that's one of my questions. Is there still room for that level of further negotiation? I can see the CM shaking his head yes. Okay, that was my primary question.
Hello, all. This is Alan Socio, speaking to you via Zoom, and you're absolutely right. The adoption of the resolution that we're proposing to you tonight is a procedural preliminary administrative step towards the acquisition of the property. And as you heard from the staff report, none of the findings that you're being asked to reach today have to do with the value. And we always emphasize that we will continue to negotiate with the property owner. We've been in contact with the property owner's attorney, and we'll continue to do so even after the adoption, if that's the decision of the council tonight, to see if we can reach something voluntary. If there's negotiations, we'll continue down that road, but if there aren't, or if we get to a point of an impasse, the next step procedurally would be for us to file a complaint in the Los Angeles Superior Court. Complaint, like any other complaint, it's just called an eminent domain complaint. And ultimately, what we're seeking is a title to the property that we're acquiring, but with the obligation to pay just compensation. And at that point, the owner has... Is invited to legally participate in the process of determining what that value is. I can tell you from my experience, 99% of these cases settle, and most of them long before trial. But ultimately, if the parties can't reach an agreement on value, then it's left to a jury to decide what the amount of compensation is for the property that's being acquired. Happy to answer any other questions you may have about procedure or timing, but I think hopefully that addresses the most immediate question that you have.
Thank you, Alan. A follow-up question on that is, if it's a sour process, what is the max or duration of this process that it could take that we could undergo?
Sure. Well, there's two aspects of it. One is, right at the beginning, at the time that we filed the complaint, we would likely seek what's called a motion for prejudgment possession, which we deposit the amount that we believe reflects just compensation in the case based on the appraisal that we have already acquired and have shared with the other side. We deposit that in a court like an escrow. It's entitled... It's available for them to withdraw at any time. And assuming the court agrees with us, then we get the right to possess the property even before the amount of... The ultimate amount of compensation is determined. So, that happens within the first 120 days after we file a complaint. But in addition to that, ultimately, like I said, if the matter can't be resolved informally, it does go to a jury trial. And typically, there's no set timeframe. It's never less than a year. But based on the time that LA Superior Court is setting trials these days, the courts are pretty impacted, so I would say one and a half to two years for a jury trial if ultimately we have to go there. We always litigate in a manner that even if we disagree, we make certain that we take the high ground and never try to get contentious with the other side. So, it's our hope that even if we have to litigate, that wouldn't happen here. You know, we treat the property owners with respect, because this is a process nobody wants to go through. But ultimately, it's part of the constitutional process, and this is how public works get done. And so, if we can't negotiate, we go to trial, like I said, probably one and a half to two years from now. But the likelihood is that we'll get possession, legal possession, so we can begin using the property in the way that we want to as part of the project, roughly within, say, four months after we file the complaint.
Thank you, Alan. So, it sounds like we would be able to continue to operate as a shelter even during the process? Okay, perfect.
Correct. That's the point of the prejudgment possession procedure, exactly.
Perfect, thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Morris, you have any questions?
My questions are answered. I don't have any.
Okay. Mr. Dunton?
Yeah, my only question is, we continue paying rent on the parcel to the property management company, and does that stop any eviction process by the prejudgment for eminent domain?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, once we have the court order, and Alan can correct me if I'm wrong, once we have the court order that orders the prejudgment possession, that means that for all intents and purposes, except for the actual official legal transfer of title, the city owns the property. So, at that point, that's when the rent would cut off. That assumes that we've deposited the amount with the state, and the property owner can at any time during any point of the litigation withdraw that amount as full compensation for the property. So, to answer your question, within that first four months that Mr. Socio was talking about, once we have the order of prejudgment possession, that's when the rent stops.
That's when the rent stops. Okay, I got it.
Right.
That's all. Thank you.
My question is, and Carl, you can probably answer this, when we do deposit our funds, the current owner can... If he withdrew any part of those funds, that would mean he accepted the contract, or he has to leave it all intact until the processes go forward?
Correct. And Mr. Socio is more of an expert on this than I am, but certainly if... Once we've made the deposit with the state, the property owner has the ability to withdraw that amount in full compensation for the property, which means that that obviates the need for having a valuation trial on the back end of things.
But he couldn't come back late and say, "I want to take this amount, and it's not all of it, because I want to still continue to..."
I'll let Mr. Socio answer that. It would be very unusual for that to happen, but Mr. Socio is better qualified to tell you that particular nuance.
Actually, in this case, it's the unusual. They are entitled to withdraw the funds in part or in full and reserve their right to seek additional compensation. So, what they do waive if they... By withdrawing the funds is any challenge that they may have to the right to take. There's always two phases to an eminent domain trial. One is, do we have the right to take the property from a legal perspective? That requires them to appear and voice their objections at the hearing, which I don't believe they... As far as I know, that they've done. But even so, by withdrawing the funds on deposit, even some amount, they, by statute, waive the right to challenge our right to take, and then the only issue is value. But the way the eminent domain law is written, it does allow them to withdraw the funds on deposit and continue to seek more through the litigation process.
So, what I'm hearing initially is that the property owner has been noticed by the city, and he has not responded as such. But he has engaged an attorney, so that would tell us that he knows what's going on. It's not like he's operating in a vacuum. He has engaged an attorney to represent him, and you've had conversations with that attorney. Did I understand that right? He has engaged an attorney to represent him and you've had conversations with that attorney. Did I understand that right?
Correct, correct. Yeah, we've exchanged written communications. They were, the, the law firm was included in the notice as well as the property owner itself.
All right, so you felt confident that, the attorney that he, they're all on the same page as to what's going on here?
I'm, I'm confident that they're aware of the proceeding and they've made a conscious choice not to appear tonight.
Okay. All right, that's all the questions we have, but I'm gonna ask that we open up the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing?
Second.
All right, so the motion by Councilmember Santinaz and supported by Councilmember Sanchez. Without objection, that'll be the order. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to come forward and have any questions or comments or have any input as to what we're doing here on this shelter?
Not seeing any. I think I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, supported by Councilmember Victor Sanchez. Without objection, that'll be the order. The discussion? Pretty easy one. I think we're all on the same page on this, but tell me if we're not.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution number 24-15.
I'll second.
By a minimum two-thirds vote.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion by Mayor Protem Ray Dutton, supported by Councilmember Victor Sanchez. Please poll the council.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, that motion is as amended for the resolution, is that correct? There was a missing zero that needed to be corrected.
The one typo.
Oh, the one typo, okay. I didn't remember. Yeah, that'll be as amended with the typo.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Santinas?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
Item 12, there are no ordinances or resolutions, there's 13 no consideration items, so that moves us to the consent calendar. Does anyone have anything they would like to discuss or poll, or if they need to announce if they have a conflict of any of these items?
I have a conflict on 14F.
F like Frank?
F like Frank.
Okay. So Ms. Morris out on 14F. Anyone else?
I have a conflict on 14I.
Congratulations. I have a conflict on the pipeline. There'll be 14G and a 14H because I have properties that are nearby these pipelines, so I'll be omitted from that. 14G and 14H. Anybody have anything?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't have a conflict.
Congratulations.
But I'd like to pull item 14D for clarification.
14D like David?
And I'd like to pull item E.
14E like Edward.
14E like Edward.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like to talk about 14GHNI.
14?
The pipeline trifecta.
Must be the same question on different pipelines.
Yeah.
All right, let's begin with Wendy's 14D like David.
No, that's mine.
No, excuse me, that's Sunny's.
14F.
All right, well, let's start with, we're doing alphabetical order.
On, on 14, 14D, this is a list of the, of areas that will be patrolled by Southwest Patrol Services. And just for clarity, I'd like to add, I know that, I'm assuming that, again, one is this is not a comprehensive list of areas that will be patrolled. But just for clarity, I just want to add on Rogers Park North, I'm assuming that based on the description here, that Southwest Patrol will enter the eastern terminals, Tribeca, going to the, the, the park. But I'd like to include specifically, for clarity, the Butterfly Garden. Okay, to make sure that it is included in the list. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
That was ve- very simple, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I said it's very simple clarity.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, on item D, I do just wanna comment. I
Okay.
I just wanna say that I'm excited that we as a team are, are investing in, in our public safety. And I'm sure a lot of our residents are gonna thank us for it, so just wanna comment positively on that.
Great. All right, Wendy, you were 14?
I have to recuse myself on 14F.
That's okay. All right, so now we have 14E, Victor?
I'll start off. Mr. Mayor, thank you. On 14E, I just wanna quickly, briefly touch on, I think that going RFP, I, I wanna start off by just saying that I would hope that staff take into consideration technological advances, meaning how we take the opportunity to evaluate our building and safety process and, and bring it into a digital era throughout the, throughout, you know, I know staff have been great and they've been very working, working very hard, but there are a lot of technologies out there that you, we see in other cities. And so I would just ask them to take that into consideration as they're looking into, into this RFP. So that's it, Mr. Mayor.
No, and I would support what, it's been mentioned by Victor, that to get the best candidates, I think we have to have the best equipment and best support. And what we have now is rather traditional, I don't wanna say archaic, but it's one step above the abacus, so oughta check out to see what's available to make it a little more.
Well, it's better.
Two abacus.
Again, it was not a shot at Stafford Green.
No, but I, I think this is an opportunity
It's an opportunity.
To try to improve upon that. And I have to amend what I said earlier, because I didn't turn the page. I'm also out on 14I, all the pipelines. And now we're gonna turn it over to Mr. Dutton, because he's got questions about GHNI.
And you gotta leave, huh?
Well, do you want me to leave? I will.
Just the age, it's just the age question.
I have to leave on I.
Oh, the age?
Yeah, and so when we were reviewing this renewal before it came in the investigation process, I asked a question of what the age of these three pipelines were, and I think Public Works has that number, and I just wanted to put it on the record as how old they were, because I was kinda surprised. You good?
Okay. All right. One other thing I wanted to say about 14E, if you look at page 10 on 14E, you've got a little graph there that helps on the evaluation factor, and there's points assigned on the contractor's understanding of scope of work, contracts opposed to, there's all kinds of, there's a good grid there to get to different points. And I think that that would be helpful, that if we can computerize that somewhat or make it a little more user-friendly, but those are things that we're gonna be considering when we make the final decision on who's gonna get the job. So I wanted to make you aware of that. You see that on page 10, Ryan? Okay. All right, so when it's all said and done, I'm out on 14GHNI. Wendy's out on 14H. Sunny's?
F.
F like 14, yeah.
Like Frank.
Frank. And of course, Sunny was out on, out on 14F?
I'm out, I'm out on I.
I. Who's out on 14F?
I.
There you go, okay. I'm not listening to what I'm saying.
And, and Mr. Mayor, members of, of the council, just for the record, all of these are property-related conflicts, is my recollection.
Yes, mine's employer.
Thank you.
I think we're waiting on that.
We're waiting on, I was, you want me to, I'll just go ahead and ask it, that way, you know, because you're kinda
Yeah.
So Mr. Gurecki or, I'm sorry, I forgot.
Mr. Lee.
Lee, Mr. Lee's, Mr. Lee could, as, as, I'll re, square up my question at the last meeting, as far as the pipelines, my question was how old they were, that before we renewed them and we didn't have that information at the time, so some research was done and some asking was done, and we just got this information today, I think, so I'd like you to share how old these pipelines are that we're gonna renew leases on, if that happens.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. The pipelines under ordinance 1427 for SFPPLP were installed on October 8th of 1999, making the pipelines approximately 24 and a half years old. The pipelines under ordinance 1428 for Air Products Manufacturing LLC was, was installed in 1930, making the pipelines 94 years old. And SFP, the ordinance 1429 for SFPPLP, they have two pipelines, one 16-inch internal diameter and a 24-inch diameter. The 16-inch pipeline was installed in January 1st of 1972, making the pipeline 52 years old. And the 24-inch internal pipeline, 24-inch internal diameter pipeline was installed in January 1st of 1955, making the pipelines 69 years old. That is all the pipelines for the three ordinances. Thank you.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions? That's it?
Well, I don't, I don't think anybody is here to answer it, but a 94-year-old pipeline's kinda old. I just didn't know what to, it's not my expertise, but I know these things are tested rigorously for the, since they've been put in the ground. And I do know that, and, and there's another agency way smarter than us that does that. And so I'll go with the certification. And I'm good, that's enough. Question, that's all my questions.
Mr. Mayor Protem, just for clarification, the 94-year-old pipe that's used for, is for the air products, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, not the oil?
The Air Products is the name of the company.
Company, okay. But they're using that?
The contents are what?
What are the contents of that?
So currently...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if we're gonna keep on going down the rabbit hole, then we're gonna have to have folks leave the dais, if you would.
I'll leave it with you.
Thank you.
You better ask some good questions, because we're leaving, you know?
That's what I'm getting at, what's being?
Because lots were drawn?
Okay, Sunny.
All right, so going back to the 94-year-old pipe, pipeline, so what's being run through this pipeline?
Members of the City Council, the Pipeline for Air Products Manufacturing LLC is currently under deferment under the Office of the State Fire Marshal. And so there is no hazardous material being transported in that pipeline at this time. Air Products did notify staff that they will notify the city immediately, as soon as they know when those pipes will be activated again.
So they're not using it currently?
That, pipes are currently inactive.
When it was running, what was being run through it?
Mr. Mayor, what you're granting is an oil, an oil pipeline franchise.
I know, but we have the, the pipe, so...
Petroleum products.
Yeah, so it is petroleum.
So when they activate, it's gonna be for oil?
Correct.
Petroleum.
Petroleum, petroleum.
Correct. What they're doing is reserving their franchise right
Okay.
in, in the ground currently.
Okay, so what process will they take to activate that later on? What do they have to do?
The exact steps, I'm not sure, but I would, we could circle back on that, but I would think that they would be notifying the city once the pipeline's becoming active once again, as, as they have explained to staff previously.
Okay, so they will have to come to us before they activate the pipeline?
No, they're gonna tell us they're activating the pipeline.
And we don't have any more choice at that point?
No more choice than we have right now.
Okay.
Correct.
At what point in time can we require them to, let's say, because the pipes will not be, the life of the pipes will not be infinite. So at what point do we say, you know what, based on this, whatever testing, will there be something that will trigger for them to say, you know what, we need to replace the pipelines?
We, we can look into that. I, I wouldn't have an answer for a council at this point right now. I mean, we could, we can dig into what kind of process they would have to go through to recertify, to reactivate those lines, and which agencies and what type of notification were required, and I'm glad to report that information back to council.
But for now, the bottom line is, there's no potential risk because they are not using it.
Right, correct.
All right, very good, thank you.
Um, Attorney, could I call, there's someone in the audience that could probably answer some of those questions. Yeah, come on up and...
Hello everyone.
Hi. You heard some of the concerns there, so, yeah, I've seen your head bobbing, so let's feel free to address them.
My name is Matt, sure. My name is Matt Cargill, I'm engineer for the water energy operation, the Paramount Pipeline. So the pipeline is right now is inactive, but in the future is going to transfer the product of like a jet fuel or diesel. But there are renewable jet fuel or diesel, so this is for the future. But for now, the pipeline is empty and there is no liquid on there. But one of the things I just want to mention here, because here is, shows for the, what's the impact of the air quality, I would say this is a positive impact when we have a pipeline, because consider this pipeline is 4 inches, has a capability to transport like 50,000 gallon of the, like a fuel. And if you want to like remove this pipeline and like using the tanker truck, you have to have like over 100 tanker truck traffic in the city, and it's cost like a, what calculation, it's coming with a 3 million CO2 on the, like a...
No, we totally understand that.
Yeah.
What we wanna make sure, we're not gonna, you know, it's not, it's concerning now, it's over 90 years old. Doing, we just, we, last year, we just lived through, what is it, a 16-inch line that was leaking? And Kinder Morgan owns the line, and we just went through that for
Yeah.
for like a whole year, and it's not even done yet. So we're a little concerned about pipelines that, that are old and leak, and this is twice as old as, I think, as the 16-inch that was leaking. So that's why we're concerned and asking questions.
Yeah, for testing the pipeline, we have a program for following up the Calistate Fire Marshal Regulation. And these are all DOT, and we are like doing several tests before running back to the service. This is including like an inline inspection, and then it's going to be hydro test.
Okay, that's what I know, I understand. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I have a follow-up question, since you're the expert on these pipes. What is the estimated useful life of these pipes?
The life of the pipe?
Yes, it can be forever, okay?
Yeah, but when we have a cathodic protection on the pipeline is, we, we have a, like a avoid the corrosion on the pipeline. And with inline inspection, we're running the, like ultrasonic inside the pipeline, and we really like measure all thickness of the pipeline. So when the thickness of the pipeline is good, so there is no problem with the pipeline.
Again, the, the question is approximately, how many years would the pipe last? I mean, this is, there's no, there's no timeframe?
No, it's no timeframe, because when you take care of the pipeline good and you have a cathodic protection, it can be like a last, I don't know, maybe over 200 years.
200 years?
Yeah.
So even my, even, even corrosion will not really seep into the pipes? It's gonna take a long time, that's what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, yes Wendy.
When a pipe isn't being used, do they corrode faster? Or do they corrode, would, is there any like?
We, we, we still take care of the pipeline, you know, we, we do the maintenance, we have a cathodic protection, it's connected to the electricity. And our maintenance guys like open, like take care of the coating, everything is under control.
Okay, so even while it's not being used, somebody's still looking at it, someone is, it's under someone's eye or whatever, maintained?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's under maintenance.
So do you know this, know this pipeline well? This particular pipeline that's 90 years old? Did you see records of it?
Yeah, I saw the records.
When was the last failure?
Last failure was, they have a hydro test on that, 2019, we have a failure, but they fixed the area over there, yeah.
So anytime there's a failure, a potential failure, it's immediately fixed?
It was under hydro test failure, not the, running the product. Because hydro test, we, we increase the pressure of the pipeline almost two times of the normal operation pipe.
So this is just education for us for future, since we, it's a hot topic for us, since we've had the problem? So do you find more problems by inspection and then you fix them? Then you, you're proactive more than reactive when you see a leak on a pipe? I'm guessing it's fixed, repaired more than all of a sudden you find a leak and then it's repaired?
Yeah, exactly.
Has this pipe ever leaked before? Do you know of?
No, I don't.
So everything's been caught prior to that?
Right.
Okay.
And if I'm not mistaken, you said, the last council meeting, you worked for Paramount Petroleum and... Petroleum, and then now work for the air?
I worked for Ward Energy, but the Paramount Pipeline is under Ward Energy.
Okay, I remember there was some relation, I just...
Yeah, we are the operation of the pipeline.
So you are familiar?
Right.
You are with the pipe?
I'm good, I'm good. What about you? You good? Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate the extra comments.
Thank you.
Let's call, yeah, get them, go get them. Oh, you want me to, he can, he can call. Yeah, he can bring it in. Yeah, this could sit. Okay, we just got some more pipeline education, so that's all yours, Dan.
Well, you got Sunny notes. Well, you got content. All right, we're all the way now to council reports. No? No, what did we miss?
Consent calendar.
Consent, oh, we got a, we got a motion on that, so.
Yeah. So I make a motion, I make a motion...
I thought maybe you voted in already.
Oh, no, no, no.
No, we want to wait for you. I'll make a motion to approve this consent calendar.
All right, how about a second? All right, so we have a motion by Mayor Protam Ray Dutton, supported by Councilmember Sanz Inez. Please poll the council.
Remember, remind me when I put down all the recusals.
And the recusals of Victor Sanchez and Mayor Coops. And Wendy on 14F, like, fine.
Frank.
But although she didn't have to leave the room, I think this included everything in the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Sanz Inez?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye.
Now we'll do council reports. Wendy?
I have nothing to report.
Well, tell us about the relay that you went, the arc walk.
Dan and I, we both attended the...
In the rain?
In the rain, the pouring down rain. The Arc Walk of Downey, which services adults with developmental disabilities. It actually was a good turnout for pouring down rain, and I actually walked with my family, and yeah, we, they raised a lot of money, and we were soaking wet, but we did our part. So it was good. It was really nice.
No, it was a positive experience.
It was a nice, positive experience, and I was surprised for the families that did come out and walk even though it was raining, and yeah, it was good. It was really good.
And what I got enjoyment out of, Mayfair Band was there in full force.
Yes.
The Ram Charle leaders, the councilman from Downey, and Assemblyperson, Pacheco, so all the support was there, even though it was raining.
Yeah, yeah, they said they expected about 500 walkers, but I'd say there's probably about 300 maybe, but I mean, to only lose a couple hundred with the pouring rain, wasn't too bad. So we, we were like, eight of us walking with three umbrellas, so.
Ray, what do you got for council reports?
I'm a boring person, I don't have anything.
Well, you should have come to the walk with Wendy.
Yes, you should have.
Sunny, what do you, no, what do you want to talk about?
I just want to piggyback on the recognitions tonight, where we honored Eden Hernandez Escobedo. I was, I was at the celebration last Saturday. Senator Robert Archuleta, representing the 30th Senate District, honored a dozen women from his district, which is 30th District, all the way from Bellflower to Monte Bello, and Bellflower actually has two awardees, Samantha Scott Salmeron and Eden Fernandez Escobedo. So they're both honored together with a dozen women, and I was very proud of our women who live and work in Bellflower for their achievement this year, and also the rest of the cities. Bellflower is only one of the three cities that have two awardees, the rest have only one, so again, it was a recognition for the city of Bellflower. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, well, thank you very much, and we appreciate you representing us there. Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was unable to attend the Arc Walk. As you can imagine, bringing two little ones was not going to be a good day.
No, that wouldn't have worked.
But I did, as someone who's very passionate about the cause, I did want to add that while the Arc is in Downey, and it was the Arc Walk in Downey, they do service Bellflower and all the surrounding areas, and they do a great job, so I do want to highlight that. Today, I attended the, along with you and with Councilmember Sunny Sanz Inez, we attended the Swer Optimus International Bellflower Live Your Dream Recognition and Awards Tea, and of course, a lot of our great staff were there as well. It was a great lunch, where they awarded three individuals and gave them a sponsorship, scholarship for tuition, for car use. These are, you know, three women that are getting back into careers and education, and so just amazing program, and just glad to be there. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Like Mr. Sanchez indicated, I was there at the, they call it a tea, although I guess the iced tea in the corner, I think, there wasn't a teapot there. What was interesting about the support they're giving to the ladies that are, they're trying to improve themselves with better education, they didn't say that that money needed to be spent on books per se, or on any kind of education. If their car needed to have a repair to get to the class, the money they were given would cover that as well. So they kind of threw a big spray of money out there and didn't restrict it to just educational items, which I thought was cool, because sometimes it's just a matter of having money to get your car to get to go where you have to, or for daycare for your child, so it had a lot of meaning, they really thought it through as to how they were going to support that. And our, my rare city clerk is a member of that club, and I want to congratulate you on what a great work that that group does, and I know you're a big part of support there, and I don't drink tea anyway, so I was all right, so. On last Friday, we had Bob Archuleta come to the Kiwanis Club here in Bellflower, and Wendy Morse was there, along with Ray Dutton, myself, and Victor Sanchez, and I think that the best question was asked by our own Jerry Cleveland. He said, you know, we get, we are taxed on our motor fuel, every time you look around, there's another tax. We also have our registrations increased every year, we're giving more money than ever to homeless initiatives, but yet I don't see anything being built in this area having to do with transportation, improved highways, wider streets, and we have more homeless now than we've had before. Can you explain to me where this money's going? So that was a pretty pertinent question, right? And his answer was, you know, I'd be President of the United States if I could answer those questions. So that's how that was answered, and we just moved on from there. You remember that, guys? That was his answer. But it was good to be able to have interaction with the state senator and tell him. We were encouraged by what he is trying to do, and as you all well know, that there is a facility in Norwalk that was closed in the mid-'80s by Ronald Reagan, that was a housing area for many of those that had mental needs, and so a lot of the people that we now recognize on the street as needing help have no place to go to be determined what their situation is. And he has made arrangements now to make rent some of those buildings to the county, and I'm anxious to see how that goes. They got a, how many millions of dollars did he say? Do you remember? He said 20 or 30 million dollars, wasn't it?
30 million.
30 million dollars was being appropriated to rehabilitate some of those buildings so that they could be used to, facilitates the five acres over there. So that's a step in the right direction, because we certainly could use more help, and that's a regional problem with homelessness. Bellflower has our issues, but not to say that we have an exclusive Norwalk, Lakewood, Downey, we all are in the same situation. So to have a regional way of trying to deal with it is certainly important. So at this time, I'm going to adjourn the meeting to our next city council meeting, which will be Monday, April 8th, at 5:30 in the afternoon. It is 8:20 in the evening. We're adjourned.